The hearing, number one, please. It's 5:30 p.m. We're opening a public hearing under the appeal of Rosemary Reedy for the ZPO's issuance of zoning permit 2016-0005 relating to the PZC's approval of a site plan application of KNCT 146 LLC. At this time, I would ask the court or the secretary to read the legal notes.
The zoning board of appeals, town of Salisbury, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 10, 2016, at 5:30 p.m. The upstairs meeting moved to Town Hall. An application by Rosemary Reedy filed 16-395 regarding appealing the decision of the zoning enforcement officer relating to the issues of zoning permit ZP 2016-0005 for the reason that permitted activity violates the planning and zoning regulations of the town of Salisbury. Property is owned by KNCT 146 LLC and located at 146 Millerton Road, Lakeville, Connecticut, and located in the LA Zone. The application is on file in the Salisbury Town Hall, and copies for review are available in the selectman's secretary's office. Applicants and/or their agents are required to be present at the public hearing.
The legal notes was published in what paper?
April 28th, Lakeville Journal. May 5th, I'm sorry. April 28th, 2016, and May 5th, 2016, Lakeville Journal.
Okay, thank you. I would like to note for the record, the members of the zoning board of appeals who are present is seated this evening. They are me, George Arndt Prent, as chairman, Jeffrey Lloyd, vice chairman, Steve Victory, secretary Dominic Tuniel, Stacy Greener, and we also have two alternates who will not be involved that are sitting at the table, Stephen Moore and Eugene Warner. Before we get started, I would like to ask our counsel, Peter Herbst, how we should proceed. Peter?
Thank you. There are two jurisdictional issues that have been raised by KNCT's attorneys in submissions that they filed there before the board. And before we can entertain a hearing on the merits of the application, we first have to have the threshold question determined as to whether we have jurisdiction to even hear the application. So my suggestion would be that since KNCT's attorneys have raised the jurisdictional issue, that we first have them present the issue, and then have Mr. Reedy respond to the jurisdictional issue, and then we have to make a decision whether we proceed to a hearing on the merits of the case. So I suggest that initially, we have remarks that are restricted exclusively to the jurisdictional issue. Section 8-7 of the general statutes indicates when you have jurisdiction, and I think that's the issue that needs to be addressed first.
Okay. Is that all right with the members of the board?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, bring up your due.
Sure. Your role, you get the signature.
Can't stand for that long anymore. For the record, my name is Mark Capasalatro, I'm the attorney for KNCT 146 LLC, the owner of the property, located at 146 Millerton Road in Lakeville. The basic question here is whether or not the zoning board of appeals of the town of Salisbury has jurisdiction of the subject matter of the case. This entity, this board, is a creation of the general statutes and the powers under the provisions of section 8-6 of the statutes. The planning and zoning regulations of the town of Salisbury adopted in part, the regulation 913.1, Tennessee regulations, in its states as follows in pertinent part. "The zoning board of appeals, the board, shall have the powers and duties and follow the procedures set forth in section 8-6 of the Connecticut general statutes as amended." In other parts states, "Decisions of the planning and zoning commission on a site plan or a special permit may not be appealed to the zoning board of appeals, but may be appealed to the superior court." General statutes delay the appealed filing requirement in that set forth in section 8-7, which says, "Appeals to the board, hearings and the effective exemptions, exceptions or variances, and the filing requirements." So here's what the statute says. "An appeal may be taken to the zoning board of appeals by appeals by any person agreed and shall be taken within such time as is prescribed by a rule adopted by said board, or if no such rule is adopted by the board within 30 days by filing with the zoning commission or the officer for whom the appeal has been taken, and with said zoning board of appeals a notice of appeal specifying the grounds thereof." And the appeal period of 30 days begins to run on the basis of three different things: upon receipt of the order, requirement, or decision from which someone appealed, upon the publication of a notice of the zoning action, and according to the sub-section F of section 8-3 of the general statutes, or upon actual or constructive notice of the order, requirement, or decision. Since the Salisbury planning and zoning regulations don't really, don't set forth what your appeal period is, or what your filing requirements are, you are then bound to follow the requirements as clearly set forth in Connecticut general statute in section 8-7. Now, the appeal was filed with the zoning board of appeals on the 11th of March, and my clients concede that it was filed within 30-day time period. The problem here in the jurisdictional issue rootless, not wondering, simple set of facts. 8-7 requires that the appeal be filed with the zoning board of appeals, and with either the zoning enforcement officer or the planning and zoning commission. It's not zoning board of appeals or P&amp;Z or the zoning enforcement officer, it must be both. It must be both, and the language is mandatory. The word "shall" appears in that sentence. "Shall" is mandatory language. We cannot vary from that. In the packet that was sent to you on the 6th of May, we had one stumble, what was attached was exhibit A was actually a notice to the plaintiff's attorney, Gerald Reedy, that the zoning permit had been issued. What was intended to be attached, as I said earlier, for your review. Counselor? And if you look at that notice, the zoning enforcement officer, Nancy Brusie, verified that neither she nor Chairman Mike Clemens of the planning and zoning commission, nor Vice Chairman Jonathan Higgins, had received and filed of this appeal. That's it. I was not entirely comfortable that this board was going to be comfortable with that affirmation in the UMA. And I would submit for the record an original affidavit. I do have copies for members. Now, I would ask that Mark, this is exhibit, with the copies of an affidavit signed by Michael Clemens in his capacity as chairman of the planning and zoning commission, and Jonathan Higgins as vice chairman of the planning and zoning commission, and Nancy Brusie, administrator and zoning enforcement officer of the town of Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission, in which they confirm that as of the 9th of May, no, none of these appeal papers had been filed with any other. So in the filing requirements set forth in section 8-7, the appeal was filed with this board, but under the oath, the sworn document, the affidavit, which is taken under oath before an early recalculation, the three individuals who represent the zoning office and the planning and zoning commission are saying, "We never were served. The appeal was never filed with us." So when you look at section 8-7, it says, "It must be filed with the zoning board of appeals and, and with either the planning and zoning commission, or the officer for whom the appeal was stated, the zoning enforcement officer." Nancy Brusie is here this evening, should you require her testimony relative to the facts that are set forth under oath in the affidavit, which she can't, which would not need, but she graciously consented to come, even in the light of her personal tragedy. And we appreciate her presence here. So that's the statute. Well, how have the courts of the state interpreted that statute? Well, the real founding case in this is the case of Red Ends versus the zoning board of appeals of the town of Perry, it's a 1990 case, and I mean, pulled from, from the court's written decision. And the court said, "The plaintiff cannot argue, however, that the clear language of the statute does not require the filing of an appeal with either the zoning enforcement officer or the zoning commission. There's nothing ambiguous or unclear in the statute or in language," which says, "An appeal may be taken to the zoning board of appeals by any person agreed by filing with the zoning commission or the officer for whom the appeal has been taken, and with said forth a notice of appeal." The court further went on to say, "In the decision where the language of a statute is clear and unambiguous, courts may not by construction supply omissions in a statute or add exceptions merely because it appears to them that good reasons exist for doing so." The court further stated that statutory, that a statutory right to appeal may be taken advantage of only by strict compliance with the statutory provisions by which it was created, section 8-7. "Statutory appeal provisions are mandatory and jurisdictional in nature," the court said, "and if not compliant with the appeal, the appeal is subject to dismissal." Statutory language here states that, "An appeal may be taken to the ZPA by any person agreed and shall be taken by filing with the zoning commission or the officer for whom the appeal has been taken, and with the board." Now, this case, that's one case. There was a case in 2005, the case of Rich versus the zoning board of appeals of the city of Stamford. A little bit different in that the city of Stamford actually had regulations for the zoning board of appeals. Those regulations actually mirrored what the statute required anyway. And that case cited, the Red Ends case, as controlling its interpretation of section 8-7 and the filing requirements. And the court stated, and I'm quoting from the court's decision, "Even if this court concluded that Rich, the plaintiff, was in some manner agreed, the record also reveals that Rich failed to file with the ZPO a notice of his appeal, the procedural requirement of section 8-7 and section 19.1.2 of the Stamford zoning regulation. Rich failed to file a notice of appeal with the ZPO as required by section 8-7. Failure to serve a copy of the appeal upon the ZPO within 30 days of this decision was a jurisdictional defect depriving the ZPA of subject matter jurisdiction." The court cited Red Ends, it was adopting interpretation that that 1998 case had set forth. Very interesting and coincidental that this spring's edition of the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies, the porters, the newsletters, actually the editor, Stephen Byrne, I know that your counsel is familiar with Stephen Byrne, perhaps you are as well, one of the most respected lawyers, attorneys in the state of Connecticut. And the heading for one of the articles was, "Appeal to ZPA must be served on PZC or its enforcement agent." And what happened in the course of that newsletter, attorney Byrne cited a more recent case, actually, this case decided last year, that was a Superior Court case entitled, "The Watrous versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of the Town of Lakeville." And in that case, the plaintiff claimed that the appeal taken by a neighbor was effective, and the zoning board of appeals had no jurisdiction to hear the appeal as the zoning enforcement officer does not properly notice pursuant to Connecticut general statute, section 8-7. And the court said, "The Superior Court looked at this identical issue in the Red Ends case." And the court pointed out, and now I'm quoting again from the decision, "As pointed out by the court in Red Ends, there is nothing ambiguous or unclear in the statutory language as you're filing with the zoning commission or the officer for whom the appeal has been taken. The court affirmed the ZPA's dismissal of the appeal for failure to comply with the provisions of section 8-7 of the Connecticut general statutes." And then, the Watrous, the court in Watrous also cited as confirming authority for this decision, the Rich case, which is, that was the 2005 case, reflied on the 1998 Red Ends case decision. The court further stated in the Watrous case, "Failure to serve a copy of the appeal upon the ZPO within 30 days of this decision was a jurisdictional defect depriving the ZPA of subject matter jurisdiction." This case mirrors all three of those cases. The court finally stated, "Failure to comply with notice requirements set out in section 8-7 of the statutes precludes the zoning board of appeals in having subject matter jurisdiction for this appeal. For this reason, any decision rendered by the ZPA on that appeal will be nullified and subject to dismissal." The record, as simple as it is, and the case is cited in the memorandum, naked abundantly clear that as to the statutory filing requirements of Connecticut general statute 8-7, which first controls the jurisdictional issue, that only the zoning board of appeals was filed, was served with a notice of the appeal. Planning and zoning commission was not. Zoning enforcement officer was not. That failure to carry out the statutory service mandate is failed to disappeal because it renders this board to be without subject matter jurisdiction under this. Questions?
Essentially, your argument is that the Reedys had 30 days in which to file, and they failed to do so. They filed with the ZPA, but failed to do so with the other two entities.
With either of the other two entities.
Either of them, yes. And therefore, we don't have jurisdiction.
Correct, because the filing was improper.
Is it a file or is a copy of the filing? Is it a copy of the file? Notice that they were not served with?
The person appealing must have a copy of the appeal filed with the planning and zoning commission or the zoning enforcement officer. And that did not happen. And to my knowledge, and I've let Mrs. Brusie speak to this, she has never seen a copy of this appeal.
Any questions, comments? Thank you, counsel. Yes?
Are we going to hear from the other side, or do you have an opportunity to ask?
Yes.
Because of the application again?
Yes.
Or is this our only time?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is Reedy?
Oh, yes. Let's get to it. I'm sure I have it. I'm Jerry Reedy, and my wife is the owner of the planning property. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you folks tonight. Thank you for accepting my appeal. The first thing I want to say is, I'm retired. I'm not a practicing attorney, although people say attorney Reedy. I'm a representative of my wife, I'm not a practicing attorney. The second thing I want to do is, I have a water, and that is, as fine as a learned attorney as he is, I don't believe it's proper that Attorney Herbst serve his counsel to the board in his appeal, given his past involvement with the case. You may know Attorney Herbst was counsel to the conservation commission when they conducted a public meeting, a public hearing. Many of the views presented by attorney Reedy in that hearing, both procedural and substantive, will be relevant to this hearing and put him in a basic conflict prevention situation. Example of this conflict is the novel interpretation of the term water course as defined in the Connecticut Inland and Wetlands Act. He came up with to assist the owner of 146 Millerton, despite being advised by DEP, the government agency tasked with enforcing the act to the contrary, and which he conceded was unsupported by any case law. In addition, he held discussions on the issue with counsel to the planning and zoning while the issue was being discussed and when he was finalizing his novel approach. Finally, Attorney DeAndrea has taken the position, his letter of February 22, to the planning and zoning commission, quote, "The Salisbury Conservation Commission is the only municipal agency in Salisbury with jurisdiction regarding water courses. Whenever the Salisbury Conservation Commission decides regarding water courses, it's conclusively binding upon the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission and must be invoked. There can be no separate determination of water course issues of the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission, as all water course issues are solely within the jurisdiction and purview of the Salisbury Conservation Commission. Any different interpretation is of no force in effect and is violative of the Salisbury planning and zoning regulations." Contrast that position with section 102.3 of the regulations, which anticipated a possible conflict with other agencies under vice. Applicants and landowners should be aware that in addition to these regulations, there are other regulations and requirements relating to land use and development. Were any conflict arising between the provisions of these regulations and any other law, ordinance, easement, covenant, rule, regulation, or permit, the provision that establishes the greatest restriction upon the use of land, of these structures.
Excuse me, Mr. Reedy, but that's, that's not the issue that we're talking about right now. As far as we have jurisdiction, I understand you've locked the point of order, and I think that's noted, but...
Well, I'd also like to make another call. First of all, with regard to serving, I spoke to Miss Bell, because I spent the winter in Florida, and emailed and stuff, and I said, "Do I need to send a separate notice to planning and zoning?" And she said, "No, you don't. I take care of that." So...
I disagree with you, sir. I've never given notice to planning and zoning.
Well, I'm flabbergasted, because it would have been a very simple thing for me to just mail it, and I asked you, "Do I need to send them something?" And you said, "No, I'll take care of sending it."
No, I've never done that in my policy.
Well, I don't know what to say. I'd be willing to take on the hope that that's what it is. And I'd also note that there is a note from Chairman Clemens that I had sent an email just after the, this decision came down on February 22, and that I would like to address the planning and zoning commission and advise them of some of the things that were not He wrote back to me on April 13, and said that he was aware of the, of the filing of my appeal. And if he wasn't on notice, I don't know how he became aware. So I'm going along in good faith, he's aware of it, and telling me, "I can't speak at planning and zoning because I'm appealing to the zoning board of appeals." So he shuts me out of planning and zoning, and you guys shut me out of the zoning board of appeals. It's very neat. And in addition, I should point out that the erasmus procedure in the conduct of the public hearing, and you accepted on attorney Herbst's, Herbst's advice to accept the appeal, then offer, then offer, introduce the question, "Does he have jurisdiction?" Now, I'm sure that a letter was not supposed to be read out at the meeting, but it shows that from the get-go, people are aware of the jurisdictional aspect, and nobody's saying, "Who to me?" Here's Chairman Clemens, he knows all about it. As far as I know, everybody's got a copy. There's invoices showing that discussions on the appeal by attorney Andrew Brus to And I really, going back to, as I said, to the, once you take the, once you take the appeal and have, open up a public hearing, it says, "The providing officer, so sure to recognize the applicant," which is me, not Mr. Capasalatro. And then I get a chance to speak and give evidence, and people supporting me can give evidence. And then the other side gives evidence. That's, that's what the bylaws say. And now I'm being told I don't get a chance to give evidence, I have to, Mr. Capasalatro goes first, there's nothing in that, that bylaws, the bylaws. As I say, I object to Mr. Herbst's being here, because I think what the name of the game is, is shut off the discussion at jurisdiction. And I should also point out that some of the items in here are going to be back to you before you, whether or not you throw this out or not, because there are two items that I'll speak to when I get to the merits. One is a special permit is required in this case, because there was substantial excavation and filling of land. And under the statutes, that requires a special permit. They got that...
But again, sir, again, sir, it's not an issue right now. The issue is, do we have jurisdiction? Because the Capasalatro has suggested that you had 30 days to notify the ZPA, P&amp;Z, and the zoning enforcement officer, and that didn't happen. Is that accurate? That's what I would ask you.
I have to ask Miss Bell. Did you notify?
No, I didn't.
It's filing.
File notification.
The statute specifically states that it has to be filed with the zoning commission or the zoning enforcement officer. File it.
Are Reedy in the place to ask questions of either side, or not this time?
Now that Mr. Reedy... Mr. Reedy's addressing the board, so if you have questions of Mr. Reedy, and I think Mr. Capasalatro will have an opportunity to speak again, and then Mr. Reedy feels he has to speak again, he'll have an opportunity as well.
Is there an opportunity for you to address his concern about the representation?
Well, I can certainly do that if you like me to.
I'm...
Well, this is, I have a copy of the zoning, zoning appeals, the applicator for zoning appeal. And it says here, "The appeal of the decision of the zoning enforcement officer, please refer to statute 8-7 regarding appeal period." And in that, does it, does it say in the 8.7? Why don't you... Appeal and decision, so in the 8.7, does it mention that the...
Well, that part does as well check for me.
Okay, yeah, we're here. It says in one, Procedure A, the procedure, "Application may be obtained from the Zoning Enforcement Officer, Town of Salisbury. An application must be completed and submitted with supportive materials to the Z B A and to the Planning and Zoning Commission or officer from whom the appeal has been taken at the Town of Salisbury Town Hall." And I've been told that Miss Bell would not do that. I would have certainly have done that, but I relied on her telling me that she would take care of it.
I've never done it and I've been here five or six years. I've never given Nancy a copy, so I don't believe I would have told you that. It's not my practice.
Well, I wouldn't have made such a fundamental error if I wasn't relying on the board to take care of it. It's right there. Would have been easier to send it forward.
We have never, ever given advice, and we've made this clear, and as being the chairman for probably a long time, we've never helped out any applicant with their application. Because if we help somebody out with their application, if they have a question, we will answer their question, and we will not fill out or advise them how to proceed with their application because of this particular situation.
I relied on advice from...
We don't give out advice.
Well, what do you want me to say?
I understand your position and the way that she and Miss Bell's position.
And you see, Chairman Clemens had notice of it. He had notice of the letter, so he's aware of it. He had notice of the... Otherwise, he wouldn't have known it.
Look, Mr. Reed, that did not mean that you filed correctly. You did not do as the statutes require. And this is, I understand that you had an email, but clearly, you did not follow the statutes here. And it wasn't done correctly.
I agree that I did not send a copy of this to Planning and Zoning. I was told that it would be sent to Planning and Zoning. Obviously, it wasn't. Now, so then, what we have, he says, she says, and what I do have is a copy from Chairman Clemens showing that he was made aware of it, and he took me off the agenda for the Planning and Zoning meeting because of the appeal. So we take a substantive...
I have a question. So how about, do you have any legal support for the concept that actual notice would take the place of filing and giving notice through the filing process? Is there any support?
Well, there's a concept of a stopple that I relied on the commission staff and changed my position in response to that. And a stopple is an argument that Attorney Capasalatro or Attorney Capasalatro has made throughout this case. And what it says is, if you rely on something you're told by a municipal agency and that if they change their stance, you would be injured, then the courts will enforce that and say, "No, you can't change it." I must also point out that there's no harm in that if this appeal goes forward, I still have to show jurisdiction. I still have to show merits. But if it doesn't, I am harmed as the aggrieved neighbor over, and we have... So there's no harm on one side, and there's substantial harm on the other. And there are a number of issues in this case that the Zoning Board of Appeals should be aware of, concluding the fact that the Planning and Zoning is granting variances.
And that's not the issue, sir.
I just wanted to state that this appeal was received on March 11. And this letter from Michael Clemens was sent via email on April 13. So there was almost a month for him to find out from the zoning enforcement officer that you have appealed their decision. So it's not that they filed it. It was just that they were notified. He was notified by the Zoning Enforcement Officer. Excuse me, Nancy, would you like...
That is not how Michael Clemens found out. Michael Clemens found out when Mr. Reed came into my office and asked me for a Z B A application, which I gave him. And I gave him Jean's, you know, she's going to take this. She'll go down and speak with you about it. That's the way Michael Clemens found out about it. I told him, "It is my thought." I said, "Mr. Reed came in, asked for the application. He told me he was going to appeal it to the Z B A, so, Michael, I'm sharing it with you." That is how he found out about it. And that's all he told him. And that's all. The only way he found out about it, to my knowledge, and to, or in his application.
And then there was an exchange of emails with Ms. Brucey, where I told her, and I'll have to go back to my files, "Thank you very much for pointing me in the direction of the Z B A. I'm either drawn forward or I'm going forward with them." And she was... She does not give advice.
Just for a second, then you can make that part.
I'm sorry.
That she does not give advice as to what things can be appealed and what things can't be appealed. But in putting to give that letter, I also have the invoice from Attorney Andrews to the Planning and Zoning Commission, where he charged for two and a half hours of researching the jurisdiction aspect on my appeal to the Planning and Zoning, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So he's not working on a subject matter that's just academic. He's spending two and a half hours in billing the town. And in two and a half hours in billing the town, so that he's aware of it, he has notice of it, Ms. Brucey's aware of it, Clemens is aware of it. And so if you want to throw me out, you know, what can I say?
So your point is that they were...
Yes, and I had written communications with them about the filing.
But you did not file the form.
Well, let me read it. Miss Bell said she was going to get...
We understand that. We understand. We understand your point, I think.
Well, when you say "I think..."
We understand that, what Miss Bell said. She would take care of it for you, and Miss Bell said, "No, she can't do that." She never did that.
Miss Bell is downstairs. Ms. Brucey's upstairs. I'm in Florida. It's right across the hall. And everybody sits and waits and says, "Okay, when do we get down to 30 days, and then we're done?" I mean, it really is... You know, that is... Excuse me, that is not you guys.
And that's not how Miss Bell works either. And that is a slap in the face with the Zoning Board of Appeals when you stay down.
Well, all I can say is, everything has been shut down all around on the basis of jurisdiction. Nobody ever gets a chance to get to the merits of this stuff.
Thank you.
Don't I get to continue on the jurisdiction?
Yes.
Yeah. Responding to Mr. DeAndrea's letter that he filed on the jurisdiction. And in the introductory paragraph of his letter, he boasts that the site plan approval application has been heard approved at multiple occasions by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and my assertions, which he characterizes a tax, are found to be without merit. That statement is falsely misleading. I will confine my remarks at this time to pointing out that while it is true the project was approved by Planning and Zoning at its meeting on September 2.
That's not the issue, sir. That's a second jurisdictional issue that's not what's going to be with the Zoning Board at this moment.
Well, all right. As I say, the point of order is, Mr. Hurst should not be sitting here. Second point of order, what you're doing is inconsistent with your bylaws. And the third point of order is, I did everything that was required of me by Zoning Board of Appeals, and now I'm being told that I shouldn't have relied or just forget about it. So that's it.
That's it?
And I just, I know you don't want to hear this, but I will tell you.
Could I know, you said, "It's inconsistent with the bylaws." Could you just cite us to what?
Yes.
Part of the bylaws you're talking about.
Section 4 of the bylaws. After an appeal is accepted, the bylaws require a public hearing, and it says, "The front's hiring officer shall first recognize the applicant or a plaintiff to testify and give evidence in support of the application or appeal." That's Section 4 of Article 10.
That's when you get to the actual hearing. That's it.
This is not a section.
If we had jurisdiction.
But it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that. This is what it says as your bylaws. And the question of jurisdiction can be addressed by me and then Mr. Capasalatro. I came here to address the question of jurisdiction, and I feel I should be able to address that question.
Yeah, I think you can. I think you have. Do you have more to add as far as jurisdiction? You know, the issue.
The issue that's been raised by Attorney Capasalatro is failure to file in accordance with provisions of 8-7. That's the jurisdictional issue that's before the commission. What more? That's it. It's confined to that issue.
Well, as I say, that's it. And there's no special permit. There's no such thing as zoning compliance. When those are issued, I'll be back before you. At that time, I won't lie to Miss Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
That's it.
Anybody else have any questions?
I'd like to leave that. Do you address the board?
Good to hear.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to address the board, Mr. Chairman. First, I share, vice chairs, concerns relative to the allegation made relative to G P. I'm not in a professional capacity. If it says something happened or did not happen, I can leave. But beyond that, even if you went into the fantasy world where that may have happened, the fact that that allegation is raised by Mr. Reed has absolutely no legal meaning. In your packet from the May 6 petition is the Redness case. I did not cite that because I didn't know that this type allegation was being made, but here's what happened. The court said, and I'm quoting from a court's written decision, "The Z B A dismissed the plaintiff's appeal for failing to serve the appeal on either the Zoning Enforcement Officer or the Zoning Commission." You can find this on Page 6 of 7 of that petition and in the text of the case that is attached. Similar to this case, the plaintiffs indicated that the appeal was personally handed to the Town of New Fairfield's Zoning Commission's Stenographer, to the Zoning Commission's Stenographer. According to the plaintiff, Mr. Redness, that individual said, "Oh, I'll take that. I know where it goes." The court found that despite any representation might be by this individual, that it did not preclude the plaintiffs from following the clear statutory language. So even if Miss Bell had said that, which she did not, that makes no difference here. The statute mandates a filing with either the Z B O, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and this board. Mr. Reed has admitted that he may know such filing with the Z B O or the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is very clear in your own application form does give guidance as to him consult 8-7, and it also indicates filing requirements. So yes, he's a retired attorney, but he's an attorney, and whether or not he is an attorney. You refer to that section. You follow that section. You fail to follow that section and make proper service of notice, then this board laps jurisdiction. If there are any questions, I'd have to answer them.
I just, of all the cases that we have before us, that all of a sudden where you've said to somebody that, "I'll take care of it," in this panel, it's never happened. And it didn't happen.
All right. Comments, questions?
And just to address the question of being aware of, you know, the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission was aware or somehow on notice. That's not what the statute requires. The statute requires that the appeal be filed with either the Zoning Commission or the Zoning Enforcement Officer. The fact that they may be aware of it, interesting, but of no legal consequence. The filing is required. The applicant has admitted that the filing did not take place. Therefore, the requirements of Connecticut General Statute, Section 8-7, have not been met. The court cases are very clear that if they are not met, you do not have subject matter jurisdiction over this. Cannot hear the appeal.
Thank you. Janie?
Just for clarity, for total clarity, is there anything about some kind of waiver where the public hearing has been noticed that somehow trumps the jurisdiction objective?
Not that I'm aware of. Either you do it right or your appeal fails to log subject matter jurisdiction.
So his slight language in there about "we went ahead and we noticed the public hearing", that doesn't change...
That doesn't change his failure to file. He's admitted failure to file.
And that we noticed it doesn't mean we saw the appeal?
Now, it's interesting that he takes, I believe it was the Redness, which actually addressed that. Where the language of the statute is clear and unambiguous, this is Redness again. Courts may not by construction supply permissions in a statute or add exceptions merely because it appears to them that good reasons exist for doing so. No, it's mandatory. The fact that you noticed the public hearing does not change the requirement.
I wasn't really into the reason of anything. I was just wanting to address the concept that if we noticed it, has that changed anything in terms of the jurisdiction?
No.
Where were you citing?
That was, if you look at Page 4 of 7, under Paragraph 3, third of the paragraph in the bottom. And this is in the Redness case, the Redness case.
I just have one more question. Again, for clarity. Some defects can be fixed, can be amended or corrected. Amendments can be made for certain things that didn't go right before, as a very general concept. Is there anything specific to this filing and require notice that can, that is, that can be amended?
No, I cannot. It is the same concept as with all statutes with limitations. The law wants people to have certainty, to know that a decision made has, after a certain time period, to force the law and can be relied upon. If you do not observe the timetables that are set in the statute's limitations, then no one ever knows whether a decision made by the Conservation Commission or the Zoning Board of Appeals or the Planning and Zoning... Board of Appeals or the Planning and Zoning Commission is ever filed. So, how can one then say that you're administering things in a way that people can understand and rely on? Statute of limitations are there, and that's what this board is on. They're there for a reason. You fail to meet the timetable, you fail to meet the requirements.
Okay, so you don't see it as, as something that can be corrected through an amended filing?
It is too late now to file. The statute of limitations has now run, and the law does not allow for you to file after the statute has run. And there's actually, if you, if you look, if you read through the decision here, that's actually addressed in this letter, it can't be filed. And that's, it's actually in the first section, by Mr. DeAndrea did address that. It cannot be, you can't go back and put a bandit on it.
Right, right, because I'm not, I'm talking about the bandit. I'm not talking about something that was, it was never touched prior to the running of the statute. It was touched and then you're trying to go back and do it.
You either do it right within the time period allowed, or you cannot go back. Period.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reed, get us on.
Good chap. Thank you. I would ask that you defer your decision so that I can go into my file and see what communications I have that would support my contention in that I note that the board also wants to be fair here. And the second thing is, I understand the concept of finality. That's why they have the 30-day limitation, which I meant. The third thing is that I thought it was pretty, in view of the, in view of the position taken by Mr. Capasolatro, that there's no jurisdiction from the get-go, I think it's pretty disingenuous for them to file jurisdictional objections having to do with whether you have to take an appeal to the court or to the Z B A. And I have not looked at land law since law school. I was an international attorney and very little knowledge of it, and I must have spent three solid weeks trying to get up to date. And boy, you guys were going to really hear it tonight on the jurisdictional issues and how I could take it to the Z B A, and it was all for naught. And I can imagine they must have been pretty pleased I'm running around in circles. But there's still a C O that has to issue, and there's still problems. But sorry, maybe back. But next time I will make sure. But I asked in the deferment, in that if I can demonstrate to your knowledge or to your satisfaction that in fact I relied on the actions of your staff.
I think what I'm hearing is that really doesn't make any difference.
I see. I see.
As the law, you know, the law of the law says, I don't know. Does it?
Well, when Mr. Reed is through, I'll give you that opinion if you'd like to have.
I have a question, Mr. Reed. I think we've all heard what you said and the argument you made. In addition to that, do you have a way to distinguish the Redness, Rich, and Watrous cases?
Oh, you mean on notice?
I mean, they were cited here many times.
Oh, you mean on the appeal aspect to the court versus the Z B A, is that the one? Which one case is it?
He would describe it, and I'm asking if you have any way to distinguish those cases.
Is it Rich and? What Mr. Junior is asking, do you have any cases which hold contrary to the holdings in Redness, Rich, and Watrous relative to the mandatory nature of the filing requirements of Connecticut General Statute, Section eight dash seven?
Not yet. I just heard it. And as I say, I got my first law book I've bought in 50 years. But, you know, Attorney Capasolatro, he knows it, and he makes, you know, he knows the cases. I have to go back and look at the, this is the first time I'm hit with this. I think it's kind of unfair that I have to respond on the spot without the ability to, because he's had, obviously, he's had a long time to prepare. I haven't had any time to prepare.
On that subject, did you receive a copy of the May 6th letter?
Yes. That's the letter from Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes.
Yes, I did. That's the one I prepared for. And so if I have something in the record or if I add something to show that case is, if I can get the citations to the case, I'll go look it up and see if, what I can come up with.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else want to discuss the issue? You know, you're our counsel.
Okay, first, on the, Mr. Reed raised an issue of conflict of interest. I represented the Salisbury and Wetlands Commission with an application that Attorney Capasolatro submitted. I served as their counsel, and they did approve Attorney Capasolatro's application. I do not view my having served as the Wetlands Commission's counsel on a matter relating to Wetlands issues on this property as a conflict of interest to my serving as your counsel on the zoning Board of Appeals on an appeal from a decision of the zoning enforcement officer. It involved the same property, but it involved different issues. First time around, we're dealing with Wetlands Commission issues. Second time, we're dealing with zoning Board of Appeals issues. I did not make the decision for the Wetlands Commission. The Wetlands Commissioners made that decision themselves. And I can understand from Mr. Reed's perspective that I'm really just the person who was on a case that he had before the Wetlands Commission where he was in opposition and he lost. So, that's the connection that I see. I have this with an open mind and have looked very closely at the jurisdictional issue that's involved here, the one that's been presented tonight. So as far as the jurisdictional issue is concerned, the zoning Board of Appeals derives its jurisdiction, which is ability to hear a case from the statutes. Cases have to come to you in the format that the statutes specify, and the statutes have been interpreted by the Connecticut Supreme Court. It says, "A statutory right to appeal may be taken advantage of only by strict compliance for the statutory provisions by which it was created." That's the Connecticut Supreme Court, and the Connecticut Supreme Court has also said, "Such appeal provisions are mandatory and jurisdictional in nature, and if not complied with, the appeal is subject to dismissal." You really had to accept this application to be able to create a forum within which the discussion of jurisdictional issue could take place in the first place. It takes place at a public hearing so that the parties have the right to address the issue of jurisdiction. That doesn't mean by having a public hearing, you've conceded that there's jurisdiction. Jurisdiction is always the first issue that has to be addressed by board to determine whether you have the right to hear the merits of the case. You can't determine jurisdiction in a private setting, and you need to afford everybody the opportunity to address the issue of jurisdiction, which is what you've done tonight. But it's a threshold decision. If there is no jurisdiction, you cannot go forward with hearing the merits of the case. Now, insofar as jurisdiction is concerned, Section eight dash seven of the general statutes, which is the statute that governs appeals to the board, the zoning Board of Appeals, states that an appeal may be taken to the zoning Board of Appeals by any person aggrieved by any officer, department, board, or bureau of any municipality aggrieved, and shall be taken within such time as prescribed by a rule adopted by said board, or if no such rule is adopted by the board within 30 days, and we're going within the 30 days because your regulations do not specify a timeframe, by filing with the zoning commission or the officer from whom the appeal has been taken, and with said board a notice of appeal. Clearly, the board was given a notice of appeal. The statute says filing. That is the word that has to be complied with. It doesn't say notifying, it says filing. My opinion as your counsel is that the word filing is there for a reason, because filing either occurs or it doesn't occur. Notification could be the subject of, well, he said or she said, and you get into a factual dispute. Filing is black and white. You have before you an affidavit signed by the chairman of the planning and zoning, the vice chairman of the planning and zoning, Nancy Brucey, who not only is the officer appealed from, but she's also the zoning administrator for planning and zoning, indicating that no filing ever occurred. That's what the statute requires of filing. And Attorney Capasolatro is correct when he says that you can't do this over. This is mandatory. The word shall is used by the legislature in this section of the statute. Shall has always been interpreted by the Connecticut Supreme Court and Connecticut courts as being mandatory as opposed to directorial, something that you may or you may not do. You have to do it. So, the issue before you is if you've got to weigh the evidence here to a certain extent, but it's really the issue of notification. Jeanne has testified that it was never filed with planning and zoning. Correct?
Correct.
Nancy Brucey has testified to that effect. Your, and Mr. Reed has no evidence that he's actually filed it. Filing would have been as simple as sending a copy to Nancy Brucey, saying, "I have filed with the zoning Board of Appeals an appeal from the zoning enforcement officer, and I'm sending you a copy to be filed in accordance with the statute." It wouldn't have required him to come up here. He could have just mailed it and gotten confirmation from Nancy that she had received it. Your application form itself, procedure 1A, says where the applications can be obtained, "An application must be completed and submitted with supportive materials to the Z B A and to the Planning and Zoning Commission or the officer from whom the appeal has been taken." This isn't secretive. This is page one of the appeal form. Mr. Reed states he's not a lawyer practicing in Connecticut, but anyone reading this form not only sees the language of the general statutes, it also states that the application must comply with the provisions of Connecticut General Statute, Section eight dash seven. It couldn't be clearer. Even if it wasn't on the application form, the law couldn't be clearer. An ignorance of the law is no excuse. You have no jurisdiction if you find that this has not been filed with either planning and zoning or the zoning enforcement officer. You simply have no jurisdiction, no matter what the if or but or and or I did or she did or he did is. If you make that filing, you have, with that filing, you have no filing, you have no jurisdiction. It's as simple as that.
May I respond to that? First of all, the word shall is not mandatory in courts of Connecticut. Reynolds v. Westport, 122 Connecticut Appeal, they argue the word shall found in the portion of the regulations shall be enforced by the government. For observe that the word shall simply establishes who has the discretion to enforce zoning regulations. Moreover, it is clear that the power to enforce regulations is discretionary. Going back to the, it's not a matter that I've lost that I objected to Attorney Hertz serving on as board. The issues that would have been here today, the 75-foot setback in water course, were also the same issue before the Conservation Commission. The, Mr. Capasolatro's partner takes the position that whatever the Conservation Commission decides with regard to a setback from a water course, which includes a lake, is binding on the Planning and Zoning Commission and thus on the zoning Board of Appeals.
Can we put jurisdiction on water course?
Well, you do.
You have no jurisdiction on the appeal at this point unless you determine you have jurisdiction. There's no need to get into a factual discussion in the absence of jurisdiction.
Well, the actual weight district tremendous. That this negates because of the Conservation Commission, which has not found a violation for a water course in 37 years, never found one, that negates the planning.
And that's not the issue that we're.
I know, I know. Okay, guys, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bell.
I would just like to reply to Mr. Reed's comments. He cited a Connecticut Supreme Court decision that talked about regulations enforcing zoning. The regulation before you is a regulation that creates statutory jurisdiction. That's different than a town regulation about enforcing zoning. The Connecticut Supreme Court has been clear that with the issue of statutory jurisdiction, that shall is mandatory, but it's not discretionary.
I think we need to take a vote on the jurisdiction issue.
Can I just ask one question, just so that it's all complete? The, the notice of the public hearing for tonight did not have to specify that the jurisdictional issue is going to be discussed or raised, right? It's implied in every notice that anyone would have the right to, or not anyone, but the party, the respondent or the non-renewed party, would have the opportunity to object on jurisdictional grounds?
Yes, a jurisdictional issue can be raised at any time during any proceeding.
That's not my question. It's more about, did our notice, I mean, it's connected, I understand, but was it our responsibility in the notice to expressly state that jurisdiction is going to be discussed in the night?
No.
He did not need any additional notice other than the knowledge that, or other than normal proceeding, that jurisdiction can be raised.
No, we mentioned it at the last meeting.
We mentioned we wanted both councils to address it at the last meeting.
Okay, so nothing needed to be in the language of the notice that had to go into the journal that this was going to be decided?
No, nothing would be in the language going in the journal. And as the chairman's indicated, I had indicated that I felt that there could be a jurisdictional issue and the council should address that. Attorney Capasolatro's office provided the Z B A office with two different language letters addressing that.
I just wanted to make clear that nothing needed to go in the no express language needed to go in the notice that had to be published.
That's correct. It didn't.
May I ask one more question? No. You just referred to two letters. I was only given one. Attorney Capasolatro submitted two letters to this Z B A?
There were two, there were two separate letters submitted to the zoning Board of Appeals, one dated April 6th, then the date of May 6th.
I only received the one that, I guess it was the May 6th from Mr. DeAndrea?
Yes, and that's, and that's the, that memo is the subject matter of this discussion theme, dealing with that jurisdictional issue pulled up.
I was told that was the only letter in the file, so I don't know anything about this, any of the letter. Can I get a copy of it?
Well, it's a matter of public record. It's in the file.
It's in the file.
Well, it wasn't there when I looked. And the other thing is, so when you sent this letter, April 8th, you already knew I was out of time.
Could I see the letter?
Thank you. You already sent it to the commission. You could have saved me a lot of dollars at that point in time and said, "Hey, you know, love to see you, but we're going to throw you out because you passed the 30 days and you didn't file with zoning, with planning and zoning." Would have been nice.
Well, I don't know if at the time I sent that letter whether I knew you had filed or not. The commodus, that's the letter, that's the letter.
Just the chair, please.
Yeah, well, I, I just think it was sold down the river.
Thank you.
Well, I would just, Mr. Chairman, I'd just respond by saying that Attorney Capasolatro's letter brought to my attention that there may be a letter brought to my attention that there may be a jurisdictional issue, and that's why I said that the party should address it at the meeting. Period. I'm not going to make a determination of whether or not there's jurisdiction without allowing Mr. Reed to be heard. And I don't want that determination in any event, the commission does.
That's what I was.
I think again, it's a jurisdictional issue. Yes.
It seems to me that the minutes of the meeting of April 12th, when both councils were present, explained that. And also explained that your letter was Attorney Clyde Purlich.
It's Attorney Clyde.
The Attorney, Attorney Clyde Purlich.
Right.
Mr. Reed, he asked for a copy. He was told that that was the case.
Thank you.
I make a motion. Do we, do you have a motion? Okay. I make a motion, yes. We did. We, we wrote this.
I thought you were, I wonder if that's how we wrote it?
No.
Okay, okay, okay.
I make a motion to dismiss the appeal for lack of subject matter jurisdiction for the failure to comply with the filing requirements by section eight point seven.
The motion's been moved. It's been moved. Is there a second?
You meant eight dash seven?
Eight seven, yeah.
It moved to the second. Any discussions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. This concludes, concludes our hearing. Is there a motion to adjourn? Make a motion to adjourn for a second? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.